It is eighteen forty-eight Central Time. Wednesday, April second, twenty twenty-five. This is Phil Green in the Marion City Hall for the Marion Planning Commission. With a special, uh, work session for the first time ever upstairs after the regular meetings.
We did. We did, we did. It was a new question. I really do feel like it was a return. We did a little bit of stuff.
Oh, yeah.
I got this pretty married in May and so we did lots of wedding.
Oh, that's right around the corner.
Yeah. It sure is. Yeah, it is. But so it's been a lot of time with like wedding stuff. Yeah. You're both been together for longer than I know. And, but yeah.
So many details of this. And it's quite amazing. You just want to be able to look at it. But yet you're probably still.
Still going. Yeah. Cause now we are to that like all the rangership stuff and start looking like, oh, we need to iron out like blah, blah, blah. We've got the big picture. Yeah. People show up. Yeah. We did all of the course. Yeah. One day, one eight hour period. It's a big day.
I, I have to not, uh, you know, like people major, major for long weekend and stuff. So yeah. Talking about we have twenty two wedding anniversary from over. So.
Yeah. 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 So there's probably a lot of really beautiful options. So we're warm and you can go like all these stuff. Yeah. Did we just get over here?
Um, well, we lived in California.
Okay.
So we had, um, like the country highway line. And, um, we should enjoy our way. Yeah. To March, you know, for you.
I have been Santa Rosa for a year.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
I'll wait until actually you pull in the horse though.
Okay. Yeah.
Yes. Yeah. So we stayed in Burton Hill last April again.
Oh, that's such a cool spot.
Yeah.
I used to, um, I worked in Santa Rosa as well, like Winder, Cloverdale. Winder, Fieldsburg and Cloverdale.
Yeah. Oh, my God.
Yeah. Excellent. Beautiful. Yeah.
Well, I mean, that's a little area.
Really?
I mean.
Oh, yeah. And it's so different like today than you know the rush year or whatever. I love the Noma more than that. It's just like one day I've got four years. No, wait, you prefer. Yeah. But the Noma. And then yeah, Russian Valley where like Corvallis. Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's a good question though. What do you have that center more?
Yeah, I haven't been there.
I enjoyed it. That has been here a long time, so I've been here a long, long time.
I have.
Sort of that, that whole entry level situation is not. Cause Maglock came after.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. Is your door? Is your door still on there?
I'm on my position. So. Now he watches security doors. Maglock's been there for a while. Maglock came to place when, when he said, Jim, for your house over here. He didn't, uh, he stayed.
Uh-huh.
Good afternoon. How about I pass on you on the road for a minute, man? About half an hour.
No. Actually, I almost thought it was the first thing to talk to you, Taylor. Yeah.
I didn't want this too close in front of your camera, so. You're, you're good, you're good. Nobody watches these things anyway. I said, I was trying to look and see because I was wondering about it too. I do audio engineering stuff, so I was like, this is so cool. The, the wire is wacky. We're just gonna support this when we're upstairs. There's an air vent that is right above the best place to film from. And the sound, this is my cheap way of blocking hot water. Yeah, it's a good makeshift though. Not a good. Kind of a DIY kind. My, my husband would, uh, be not pleased if I spent like hundreds of dollars on professional audio gear. Something that makes no money. No. This can't find the right places for me. I do not make any money recording this evening, so. Got to keep under budget. Right, yeah. Well, at least at the same time though, at least people can see this and they're having access to it. I thought it was one of the things is like, it's one thing to record things like this, but it's a little thing for people to actually notice what's going on. So when you're doing this idiot thing, they may not realize that. Yeah. Who you ask? Yeah. Um, I've, I've recorded like art meetings and I have to think like the artists who are, um, auditioning to be selected probably watch the meetings to get a feel for like how the discussion goes. And what parts of their project were blacked and didn't. Cause there's only so much that they, you know, write down. Minutes are good, but it's twenty twenty-five. I happen to walk everywhere in this world with two four K sixty FPS cameras. Right. Why not? If I've got all this cloud storage and technology, why not? Good, that's a good way to put it. I'm Ron, by the way. Ron, nice to meet you. What brings you here today? Um, so my cousin Mitch, my grandfather used to be on the committee of Brooklyn Island, so. Cool. I tell him I come to this one. I know at one point in my life he started coming to these a lot more, so I'm just like, well, I can, fine. Yeah, I've always wondered about it, so. These are typically a shorter meeting, planning commission compared to city council. Well, tonight's gonna be an exception, I imagine. We're gonna be upstairs for like a second part of the meeting. Yeah, they keep talking about the workshops though. Work session, work session. Yeah. That should be at the, at the conclusion of the, the normal ceremony down here. You take me more serious than everyone else. This might be an exciting one. Do you have a here from the, the Johnson County Post? She doesn't usually come to the planning meetings. But this is a special one, right? Uh, Area O.
Call order, a planning division meeting in the city of Marion, Kansas, April second, twenty twenty-five. Uh, may we all stand to, uh, please. Well, of course you got a call order, sorry. Just stay standing. Everybody could, you want to do a order?
Oh, roll call?
We have to have a order at the.
Okay. So Bailey.
Here.
You and Dylan. Here. Mitchell Fowler.
Here.
Brett Harmon.
Here.
Kelsey Combs. Here. Sarah Lindbacher. Eric Sean McConnell.
Here.
Daniel Malina.
Here.
Cole Stevens.
Here.
Thank you.
Now, uh, maybe say the question next to the plate.
Let's introduce the five of the United States of America and the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
Yeah, the front of you approved from the minister for the words that we. Any corrections or comments? Very none, you have a motion?
I would give a motion to a first minute.
Go ahead, second.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Favor of those. Thank you. First order of business for the evening's consideration, redevelopment project plan for project area O.
Excuse me, Commissioner Brian, our community development director. Uh, that is correct. Your one item of business this evening is the consideration to, um, find that project area O is consistent with the intent of the comprehensive plan for the development of the city. I am going to do a very high level discussion, review what exactly this all means. Um, so open the screen to see a map, uh, it's in gray, so that is the C I thirty-five redevelopment district that area in gray. So, uh, southern boundaries is Seventh Fifth Street. That district continues up the, um, I thirty-five on the west side and taking Shiny Mission Parkway at which point it goes over to the east side and terminates at the northern portion of their by Chox and Drive. Uh, so within the I thirty-five redevelopment district, that's where we see the majority of our redevelopment occurs. And typically that redevelopment is done through a public-private partnership. Uh, redevelopment, uh, is typically and generally more expensive than what we call greenfield development. Uh, greenfield development is exactly that, a development that then occurs only that has not, uh, been evolved before. So redevelopment, you know, you have to demo property, perhaps improve infrastructure, there's a variety of things that, that occurs when you do redevelopment. Like I said, typically requires public-private partnership. So when redevelopment accor- occurs, obviously there's usually two aspects to it that, that we deal with. Um, we deal with the financial aspect or the public-private partnership and the planning and zoning aspect of it. Um, so, um, in those two different areas, um, the planning commission's role, uh, is small in one area and quite large in the other areas. So on the finance side, so again, uh, the area with the redevelopment district and the, you know, type of briefly about the seating. That is the area that the city council plays a primary role in regards to, um, reviewing, uh, public-private partnerships, approving them, administering them. And the role that the planning commission makes in it is what is being asked to be deceived. And that is again justified, um, that the project plan for project area O is consistent with the intent of the comprehensive plan. I'll go through exactly what that means here in a bit, but that's really the aspect of which the planning commission is involved with the financing over the public-private partnership of, of these types of redevelopment projects. Now, on the other, other part of the planning zoning, that's where you all play a major role. Um, that's where you all have the, uh, discussions with developers, that's where you all put public care in, uh, that's where you all have the in-depth review of a, um, development plan, a rezoning. And then the city council, um, they, they do not have a public care inside, so that's who you guys play much lighter role on that aspect of it. So, um, that's kind of redevelopment side, just kind of wanted to make sure we all understand aspects of the planning commission, this review of all of these kinds of things. Um, and I will also say at any point in time, if someone has a question, please, uh, let me know, I'll be happy to answer it the best I can. But, um, so that kind of sets the foundation as to what the planning commission is being, uh, requested to do this evening. So, um, go back to this real quick. So within the redevelopment district, there is kind of two aspects to the redevelopment district plan. There is the spatial or the map, which is what you see up here, and then there is actual text that goes along with the redevelopment plan. Uh, what I like to say is, um, the tip district, the redevelopment district plans are very much sixty thousand foot level view of what could occur within this area. Um, it does spot some very general types of activities that can occur here, uh, retail, multifamily, and those kind of things. Um, but also within the I thirty, I thirty-five redevelopment district plan, there's a number of project plan areas. You can see them all up here. A little tough to see, but so, um, just to let you know, kind of give you an idea. So this is project plan area F. This is, um, the area where, just see it right there. This is the area that, um, most of our car dealerships have been, like, have recently developed. Um, up here is project plan J, it's right here. This is the IKEA, uh, project plan. This is project plan N, this is Marion Grand Station, which we're all familiar with, it's current right now. And then what we're going to talk about this evening is project area O. So when, so zooming into the specific area we're talking about this evening, this is sixty-second terrace is at the top of the screen. Shiny Mission Parkway is at the bottom. On the left is IKEA Way, on the right is Antioch. So this is, um, kind of going from left to right, the Shell Station that's along Shiny Mission Parkway, Chipotle, uh, Pair of Coffee, and the, um, uh, old library building. So the red line you see that's going through there, um, this red line right here, that was the previous, uh, I thirty-five redevelopment district boundary. So everything to the left or to the west of that red line is in, and then everything to the bottom of that red line, um, or south of Shiny Mission Parkway, uh, is also in. That's Marion Grand Station that's occurring on the south side. Just on Monday, oh, also reiterate, excuse me. So the areas in yellow, those are the library properties, those are the properties that the city recently purchased. Um, city, uh, obviously purchased it with the idea that the old library building would be redeveloped, uh, for a higher and better use. That obviously is a very busy corner, a lot of activity that occurs there in addition to the redevelopment that's occurring on the south side of Shiny Mission Parkway. It seems to be, um, appropriate and planned for, uh, potential redevelopment of those properties. So there's a blue line there now. This is what the city council on Monday night approved was expanding the I thirty-five redevelopment district. So now, um, the, uh, library building and the other buildings that the city owns with the library there are all within that I thirty-five redevelopment district. So that brings us to you all this evening. So again, as I mentioned earlier, within those, uh, within redevelopment districts there are project plans. Um, one of the, the new project plan that the adoption of that tip, excuse me, that redevelopment district made was project plan of, and that is what you see outlined in red. So the boundaries, again, on the left are IKEA Way, um, to the top, West Sixty-second Terrace, to the right is Antioch, and at the bottom is Shiny Mission Parkway. So, um, again, much like the district plans, project plans have a spatial aspect or a map, which is what you see up there, um, on the screen. Then they also have the text aspects, that the aspects that spelled out what is to occur within the project plan. And your all's task this evening is to review that project plan and to consider finding that the project plan is again, is consistent with the intent of the comprehensive plan for the development of the city. Um, I want to also state that, um, this all seems very complicated. It is, uh, this is also allowed by state statute. This is, uh, following state statute. Um, this is something very similar to what we did for Marion Grand Station on the south side. Um, so, uh, again, um, so these are state statute requirements that we are following. So, um, the main point of the project plan, uh, for project area O, I'm just reading if this is within the, um, project plan is, um, the redevelopment of the subject area project, uh, area O, um, will consist of one or four commercial retail buildings ranging in size from fifteen to twenty thousand square feet. Parking lot for commercial building and any necessary infrastructure and support of the project plan, including utility relocation, construction of a multi-story parking structure to su- to support a multifamily project. So, um, staff does find that our Shiny Mission Parkway corridor plan as well as our Marion Comprehensive Plan twenty forty both consider redevelopment of this area. Um, and, uh, the types of redevelopment that called out in, in project plan O, commercial, uh, infrastructure, um, is, that fits well within both of those plans. Uh, so staff does recommend that the planning commission find that, uh, pro- this project plan for project area O is consistent with the intent of the comprehensive plan for the development of the city. That, you have to answer any questions.
Commissioner Dinnan, further questions for staff?
Can you just be clear, um, this is, we're to determine that this all fits within the I thirty-five project plan, that we see it consistent for that.
Yeah, so, right, so what this is, is finding that the project plan, the project area O, which, um, is a separate document from the I, um, I thirty-five redevelopment district, um, but you're finding, you're considering that that project plan is consistent with the city's comprehensive.
Just wanted to clarify my own. I'm personally very quick on the detail of that and how that fits having been involved with several of these, um, some of the things that we've seen our plan over the course of many years. I'm pretty calm.
Any further questions? Very now, I'd make a motion that the planning commission find that the Shiny Mission Parkway, IKEA Way, and West Fifty-seven Paris and Antioch were redevelopment project plan. For project area O, it is con- consistent with the intent of comprehensive plan for the development of the city. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Have a second. Any additional instructions needed? Okay. On favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Business from the floor, is there any business?
One thing I have, uh, before we adjourn is you go upstairs, is just a reminder that if you all have neighbors, friends who are looking to do, uh, any type of improvement project to the residential home, we have grants available for that. Uh, please feel free, we have our exterior improvement grant as well as our sustainability grant. Sustainability grant, uh, something that everybody, when summer hits, they turn on the AC and it does not hit back, they all come for the redevelopment grants. If you think you need a new HVAC system, you might want to, uh, get in on it a little bit earlier. We do provide, um, thirty percent reimbursement on both of those programs, uh, to a total limit of about three thousand dollars for both of those. So again, any folks that are looking for that, um, to do any of those projects, please, uh, have contact with me at home. That's all I have this evening for the meeting.
Finished business?
No, sir.
Full business?
No, sir.
Any update on anything we did? Anything going on?
Uh, the Marion Grand Station project continues to go along. It was, uh, it's an excellent job that's, uh, ahead of schedule. Hopefully that'll be, uh, open soon soon. Um, the underground utilities, uh, yeah, hopefully they continue to tell us it's going to be all done in July. July-ish, I'd put that to that. That approach factor to that.
Okay. Any other projects?
No, sir.
Two. Ken? Ken, what was your statement here?
I made the note that it were adjourned.
Say it again, adjourned.
And just remind everybody, we are going to be upstairs for the study session. There is tables up there, um, rectangles, uh, tables set up for you all, uh, folks that want to do the, uh, the meetings will be on the back of the deck. So I would give us ten minutes, so let's try to be up there ready to go at, um, seven twenty-five. And there's an elevator available, maybe.
The quickest planning commission. The quickest planning commission meeting down here ever.
I've, I've only been to one. I was at the gym and I finished early and I was like, well, here.
Gotta be careful, you're gonna turn into meat some day coming to our meeting.
How you doing? Uh, yeah.
Good to see you.
See you soon. See you. See you.
Just some time?
Yeah.
Exactly.
Top of the track.
Uh, Barry, what's your question? She didn't take my, anybody, she can't do what's up. Oh.
Yeah, yeah. I know.
You always kind of.
I don't want to work with those.
We're burning.
By any commissions, you might want to come to this side of the table. The screen's going to be right there. So my, I'm sorry, should've told you guys that. You might want to come on this side. To this table over here. Okay, fair enough. We will see you here in just a second.
Have you been driving by still over here?
Yeah.
Her mom, her husband was retired and she's getting a few days off, so do something again.
We do want to do it. It's corporate. More corporate than that. You don't want to get a three more minutes until I said, yes, twenty-five. It's a sweet, it's a sweet military corporate. You can't say no. You can't say no.
Come on up and do a little.
Hold on. Yeah, we can have both of us.
Okay. Okay. Huh? Yeah. Um, I just wanted to tell everybody, I didn't get a chance to, incidentally, because of the refrigerators and the soaks in the fridge over there and, uh, restrooms, um, we have two upstairs that are overcome, uh, fifty times.
Well, we got to keep your butt, you know, up in the wake here, but we can, you know, go up with the sugar high and you have that crash. We're looking behind while the police come in. Thank you.
All right.
Um, I think we can start your, are you ready to start, Bill?
Yeah.
Um, so the purpose of this meeting is I'm going to watch through a development plan that was submitted today at, at noon, um, for this area up here. We'll give you more details about it here in just a second. Um, I think it's important that I understand a couple of things. First of all, staff's not reviews this. Um, so I will try to help you answer questions the best as I can, but there may be questions I can't answer. Really the main purpose of this meeting is to give you, or this work session, I should say, to give you all the opportunity to see this plan, um, instead of throwing at you, throwing at you on, um, your next meeting in May without having seen it first. Give you guys the opportunity to have questions, comments. You can certainly make them. If you have questions or comments later on, you can certainly email them to me. But it's an important plan. Um, we did this with Marion Town Center, but it was a joint study session with the city council. Um, but, uh, for this purposes, we're just going to do this work session with you all. Um, a couple of things also to, um, keep in mind is that when you consider this when it comes before you get to meeting, we act in a quasi official manner. So what that means is, eh, is that you all will take in all the information and make a decision. So what you need to remember is you're not making a decision tonight. So this is not the appropriate time to say, hey, I vote for that or I'll vote against it. That is, it's not over just soon, see me, because you don't have all the information. When you go to public hearing on the side, you may get, you arguably get more additional information. It may, um, may, uh, make a difference in how you vote. So again, questions, comments, those are certainly appropriate. Um, yeah, this is not your moment of making any type of decision. So, any questions? Please let me know as I go through this. Have we got any questions? If you have any questions about this, um, but yeah, let's, uh, go through it order. So obviously this is project plan area O, what y'all just acted upon. City council have a public hearing on project area O, um, when they have the hearings on the project plan as well. So I'm getting out my calendar. I'm not texting anybody. So, um, there will be, so if it goes, eh, for our kind of what we mapped out timeline wise, um, you all will hear, see the project plan and rezoning for this area at your May seventh meeting. And then it will go to a special council meeting on June sixteen. And at that June sixteen council meeting, they will also, the council will also be, um, most likely considering project plan O, which you just acted on, and then any kind of reasonable agreement as this pertains towards any kind of public, private financing. Reason is the sixteen, because of Memorial Day, which, um, we can't have a meeting on Memorial Day in May. And also, uh, timing, there was, uh, uh, some important people on the development team that couldn't make that. So it's going to be, um, on the sixteen, at schedule. Of course, we all know things are subject to change. So again, you've seen this map already. Um, the reason I pointed this out is to make you sure you understand, uh, the development that was submitted to us was by Drake Development. They are folks that are doing the south side. They want to do Marion Town Center. They are the vol- excuse me, uh, Marion Grand Station. They are the developer of Marion Grand Station. So they are now submitting the development plan for, for the north side. Um, they own fee simple, the Caribou Garage property. They have contracts to purchase on Chipotle, Shell, um, this little, uh, office building and possibilities. Um, so what does that mean? That means they have the ability to act as owner agent. It provides a documentation of those property owners. Um, also means that typically when you have contracts to purchase, it means somebody has put down some money for the option to purchase a property. And this is common in the commercial world. And then when something occurs like, uh, rezoning approved, license file, building permit issued, all those things, that's when the actual, um, transfer or sale of property occurs. That's actually when they did, um, the property in there, and it's called fee simple. Um, so it's like when you purchase your house, when you purchase the house, once you have a contract, hey, I have thirty days to review everything on the house. I will close it in thirty days. Um, and that's when you actually buy the property. That's very similar to what occurs in the development world. That's exactly what occurs with Marion Grand Station. They all, uh, amass all the properties for contract. And when approvals are made, they purchase the property. Uh, the developer also will act as owner agent for the city owned properties as well. So essentially, um, essentially, so the, um, Drake, when they are before you at your planning commission meeting, is able to speak for the entire, and their development plan covers the entire area. And while I have this up there on the screen as well, I want to point out that, um, when you see the development plan, the only thing that will remain is Chipotle. So all the rest of the area will be, all the other property, um, uh, excuse me, buildings will be demolished, created out. And so the only thing remaining will be Chipotle.
Right. How do you want a question?
Right now.
All right. Um, what's the, any, do we know what the level of risk, um, that any one of those contracted properties could suddenly decide, yeah, we're, we're not going to do that?
Uh, I think the risk of that is very, very low. And if they do, it would be, I believe, a breach of the contract by that person. At any point in time, someone can do something like that. But again, that's a breach of contract. Um, and again, uh, because we're putting a lot of angst in the back. Yeah, but it's, again, it's not atypical the way these developments work. So, um, it's nothing, that is not atypical. But yeah, I mean, somebody can always just do a breach contract and then, um, they have the legal ramifications to go, uh, back. So I put this slide up here. This is a slide that's been shipped to the city council member at times. Question up here, this is from our twenty twenty-four citizens tax, uh, citizens survey, citizens satisfaction survey. Question is Marion should try to bring a grocery store to town even if it requires giving the store a multi-do- multi-million dollar public incentive package. Um, sixty, almost sixty percent of Marion residents in twenty twenty-four agree that the city should be doing that. Uh, good. A little bit of a precursor. So this is the development plan. I will zoom in a little bit closer so folks can see here in just a second. Um, IKEA Way, Shawnee Mission Parkway, Slater, Sixty-Second Terrace and Antioch. You see building here. This is, um, Chipotle remains, building here and the building there. So let's just zoom in and upstairs with this. So starting on the west side, so this is the block at IKEA Way, um, Sixty-Second Terrace, Slater, Shawnee Mission Parkway down here to the bottom. That is, and I got an architectural rendering in Tulsa, so it gives them much for review. But again, I want to show on the plan view. This is about a two hundred and ten, uh, unit apartment building. Very similar to what's going across the, being constructed around, across the street. Um, similar or different, they're going to have their own flavor, it's going to have its own flavor and style, but, um, very similar to that. IKEA Way, um, this is a four-story building that's built on top of a two-level parking structure. They're going to use the grade of IKEA Way and Sixty-Second Terrace to make that two-level parking structure work. Um, so it will be an interest in IKEA Way, that's the lower part, gives us the lower part of the structure. And Sixty-Second Terrace, that's the upper part of the structure, it'll be an interest into there. Uh, we see a Chipotle space and you can see a little parking area here. This will be part of a, um, apartment building, but it will be kind of, it'll be a leasing, uh, leasing area. So this will be partly simply for a leasing area. I believe there's about three hundred parking spaces underneath this building. So going forward to the other side.
Brian, you have Brian half located for, uh, trash in the apartment?
Uh, excellent question. I've not gotten into that. Uh, we've already had some preliminary discussions about that. I will get more details on you, but I believe the apartment of trash is going to be inside in this area. And then the trash collector will need to, will be picking it up, um, I believe somewhere maybe out on the street. I'll get more information on you. That was one of the details they continue to work on, but, uh, storage of trash is inside.
Brian, you said that the parking structure will be underground or will it be visible?
It will be still not visible.
Okay.
But mostly underground.
Okay.
When we get to the renderings, I think that comes out a little bit clearer. But yeah, so we mostly underground. So getting over to this area here, so we're now on the other side of Slater. So this is the, um, east side of Slater. Um, one thousand square foot, um, proposed restaurant. Is it going to be one restaurant or is two restaurants in there? Obviously, you feel the parking up there. Uh, any access point is right here. It varies up with or comes straight across from the, uh, access point that is going to, um, um, Chipotle. Yep. Um, this is twelve thousand five hundred square foot proposal. Um, on there, also, this is the loading dock area right here on the Wolfy Screen. Let's see that again on the architectural rendering. So this is the screen roll right here, but this is the loading dock right here. The access point, let me scoot it down a little bit. It will be, the access point is West Sixty-Second Terrace right here. And then again, still access point off the later right here. Um, they have transmitted traffic impact study. I've not looked at it or it hasn't been reviewed. But I do believe it shows, the paint count shows up here. Do believe that the main public improvement for this, uh, project is a dedicated left turn lane with a, um, median. So this is the, if you remember here, this is kind of, if you go in this area, it's kind of no man's land or no person's land right here. It's marked, again, it's still marked. So this is a dedicated left turn lane.
It's a pretty challenging grade coming in off, off, uh, Sixty-Seven.
Uh, yes, that's, so that's a, so, right. Um, so you can, it's not on this one, but I think it's on another ground. So as you know, there's currently a wall that's all the way out here. They are going to be doing, uh, a new wall that is drawn in a little bit more, so it's back off the road a little bit more. Um, and it'll probably be a pretty substantial one. Right, through here. Previously, um, discussion was of hope that we could, they could have been graded out, but that's just not going to be the case. So, uh, but it's positive evidence that it's pointing back from the intersection, um.
For that, uh, turn. Um, yeah, for comparison, do you happen to know what the square footage of the middle ten house was?
I do not, but I can get that for you if I was.
Just so people can visually understand the difference in the size, because it's smaller.
Yes, it is. I'm thinking around twenty-two inch.
That's in the.
Yeah, I'm thinking around twenty-two inch.
Okay.
So, um, before I leave this slide, one more thing I want to show you all. So this actually does quite a bit for access control and quite a bit of improvement on access, particularly on Shawnee Mission Parkway. Um, currently there's one, two, three, um, access points. There's actually a fourth one there. So these, one, two, three, these access points will be gone. So that is a, a big benefit to the Parkway. Um, again, those access points out there. Chipotle is right here, um, Slater. And then also, for somebody with the side, there's this very odd entrance point right here at the intersection of Antioch and Shawnee Mission Parkway right here. That will go away. The, uh, office building that sits right here has on-street parking that they use. That is parking that is actually in the right way. That goes away. Um, so this is the existing, pretty close to the existing access point of the library. Um, and this is, um, pretty close to the existing access point that's into the, um, maintenance portion of the library. And then this access point right here also goes away. This is the current access point into, um, Caribou Company.
Brian, can I raise, is there currently a light at Shawnee Mission Parkway Slater or is that a right turn? So, in Slater?
Uh, yes, excellent question. So let's go back to here. Uh, I'm going to show up to the foot. I put, I put a, I put a, I put a line right through there. So there is a hard mean all the way down Shawnee Mission Parkway. There is an opening right here. So if you are eastbound with Shawnee Mission Parkway, you can left into Slater, uh, but you cannot. Uh but you cannot go to the, excuse me, yeah, you cannot be westbound, you can take a left. So it's a left turn only, uh divided median, so right here, there's no traffic light there, but it has a left turn only.
And there's no intention to add additional lights in that section, correct?
There is not.
Good.
There is not. So so back, okay, um so we talked about traffic, let's talk about stormwater. This really doesn't, this kind of shows that, so this is the area of imperious surface. This is also a remainder, they did put it in here because I'm touching it. Um so the amount of imperious surface is going to be reduced by a lot happening here. So um there will be, you know, less imperious surface, and therefore hopefully less uh stormwater. Um again, uh I might have chanced through these, but here's the landscape in the plan, again, you can see uh quite a bit more of a reminder of street trees than what is there right now, because there is very few, so. Um then, again, I haven't had time to delve into all of it, but we'll be looking to see, you know, kind of the typical stuff the planning commission's looking for. Um uh screening or some landscaping along here, uh or kind of along here, around, particularly up here around the perimeters of the parking lot. Obviously, this is gonna have a retaining wall, so this is uh not nearly invisible. Uh but again, I haven't had a chance to delve into any of those details yet. Um here are the renderings. So this is the one or two uh tenant um restaurant area that sits in front of the proposed um grocery store. So again, um this is faces out of Shawnee Mission Parkway. Again, glazing with some, this is back a house for them actually, so glazing with some vinyl inserts. It's very similar to what Tabah has right now, if you like Tabah, you can look at what that's exactly, it's facing on Shawnee Mission Parkway. Um this will be facing to the um, oh, excuse me, this is west, I'm sorry, so this is facing towards Chipotle, I apologize, facing towards Chipotle. This will be facing toward Shawnee Mission Parkway. This is going to be facing towards the grocery store, and this faces to the north, this faces out to the food department. So this is what, again, faces Chipotle. Again, very similar, a little bit different to what's across the way, um so, you know, same general architecture, but yet different enough. So folks can, you know, it's a different area, different space, but uh you know, they are connected. And then this is the proposed grocery store, um architectural rendering. You see the screen wall here, so this, this will be, this is the east elevation. Uh so screen wall, you can kind of see here the loading dock as it goes down. Um then this is the south, and this is what faces on Shawnee Mission Parkway. They put quite a bit of, of glass, it may be spangled glass, spangled glass is essentially um glass intended. Um because again, this will be back a house. When I say back a house, that's the um mechanical areas, that's the utility area, that's the area that you all, you own the stores. You see, do not any of the employees owning, that's not a house. So um usually don't have, I think, you know, you don't have windows and things like that, that people can see if you're in revenue access, you know, so.
And not surprised that faces Shawnee Mission Parkway?
This is, yes, so they have um, they have put some additional glazing on there, some, we, we, that's one of the things we had initial conversation to make sure whatever faces Shawnee Mission Parkway doesn't look like this is a wall, so. Then this.
And that's kind of just Parkway, you were pointing at, or is that Antioch?
So this faces Shawnee Mission Parkway.
Did you have?
This, this faces Antioch, right here faces Antioch. This faces uh the restaurant towards Chipotle, and then this will face towards the north of this food department area. So many, this is driven. And then next is the apartment, oh, excuse me, sign, again, very similar, uh Marion Grand Marketplace, right? Marion Grand Marketplace will be the name of the development, very similar to what's going across the way, and signage is similar. These are the apartments I wanted to show you, so you're looking down into the apartments, you're up above looking in, you're above the building looking down. Uh I showed this first to show, uh again, uh so these are, these are different floors, first, second, third floor, um not different buildings. So just look at one of them, and this will be Shawnee Mission Parkway, so this is facing towards Shawnee Mission Parkway. This is the courtyard area that's in the middle, and this is the infinity pool. So there'll be an infinity pool that'll be looking out over onto Shawnee Mission Parkway. I will show you the rendering here in just a second, come to clear, but um it's hard to see in the renderings that there is. We are also in there for, for, for. Alright. Uh this is a multifamily building, so east elevation, um so this is the elevation that faces Chipotle. You can kind of see Slater rising up there. Uh when we get to the EB Street, excuse me, Akia Way, um it comes a little bit clearer how the elevations work in the parking structure, so I will talk a little bit more when we get there, but you can kind of see here as well, so this is the area up by Slater and Sixty Second Terrace. Um Chipotle will be sitting right here, um this is a little, this is a leasing area, although we're on a smaller parking lot. Uh so Shawnee Mission Parkway is on this side. Again, um it's really interesting to see this step down, or step up, uh type of architectural feature. Again, um you know, giving better visibility for other people, and also it's just a pretty promising future, particularly since this is what faces on the Shawnee Mission Parkway. Uh this is the north elevation, so this is Sixty Second Terrace that this is on. Here is the parking entrance in the Sixty Second Terrace, so this will be the upper uh part of the parking structure. So um and again, four stories, that's set on top of a parking structure. Uh so, one, two, three, four, so yes, this will be, we'll look back here, this is the parking structure you see right here. Looking in the back, if you, if not, if it, okay. Parking structure is kind of right here, and you can enter there, so um, so yeah, you can see a portion of it, but you really can't tell anything different from the rest of the uh, rest of the parking.
Brian, much of the second, much of the second story of parking?
Yeah, that'll be the upper level.
Same type of expenditure for, across the street?
Uh same level, same quality, different look, um still kind of, you know, dual beer look. I believe putting people going down Shawnee Mission Parkway, hey, the same people did it, but it's for one that have a different feel, obviously. Um this is different, you know, uh makes you a little bit different, neighborhood a little bit different feel to it. But yeah, same level of quality, and so I think, uh as I said earlier, anybody uh going on Shawnee Mission Parkway.
Yeah, and I would like the same, same people that did that. Same build?
Uh so yes, podium construction is like the, I'll tell everybody else what that means, I know what the building is what that means. Um so just like on the south side, so podium construction is um generally concrete parking structure below. Four levels, four stories of stick, four stories of wood construction. Um not to get too deep in the building code, but if you go above that, that's what other things kick in. So if you go around town, you'll start noticing, hey, that's only got four stories above it. That's kind of, you know, one of the standard things, because if you're gonna go higher than that, you're gonna go a whole lot higher than that, so.
The bottom, are you writing account as a basement, or is it a double podium by the eight?
I will believe, not even, what, not even into building code and that stuff that, well, you all have interest in it, not necessarily what you all do. I, we can, I can have more of those, yeah, those kind of questions, email to me, my building official will be happy to help answer those questions. So, so yes, we got to answer the question. So south elevation, so this is facing Shawnee Mission Parkway, here's your infinity pool right here. So you'll be, people will be able to have the rendering and look out across and see uh Marion uh transition across the way. Um so again, uh front, and it's kind of hard to see, but these are the parts that are stepping back on stair steps, if you would, uh help, here you go, you can see it here. Uh and then this is Akia Way. You can see, so up here was the entrance off of Sixty Second Terrace, and then you can see that it comes down, this is the entry into Bowl. So that's how they use um the grade to make that work with parking structure. We say parking structure, at least I say parking structure. We were just going with the parking structure for the Marion Community Center, a structure, there's no ramps between the levels. Parking, you realize there are hard ramps between the levels. The reason that most likely didn't put some ramps, um ramps in there is because those take up a lot of parking space. If you don't put them in there, you can get a whole lot more parking, and again, the reason why it is because of the community street. Um this is kind of an interior view, it's a little bit tough to tell, but this is that, you're within one of the courtyards. So this is if you're in the courtyard looking at the north side, so this is if you're inside the actual apartment, uh excuse me, the uh apartment building. So can hear is the pool elevation, um so pool deck elevation, north elevation, so that's if you're on the pool looking to the north, you can enter apartment building. Um so again, uh just wanted to give you a view of that. Um and this material, not, you know, scat or ceiling screen, but same level of quality as what's going across the south side, just a little bit different feel to it, um again, just hard to, that, believe, in, in my mind, I, you know, when the market's a little bit different, I have a, you know, you know, hatred from outside around here, so. That is all I have. Um I will, obviously, I've just picked and choose some of the slides here. Um there's more, um with the development plan, more, a larger supplemental and stuff like that, so I don't think this is the only thing. We will send the traffic study out for review for our city engineer, and also KDOT, KDOT will review it, which is Shawnee Mission Parkway. Um is a state highway, and um obviously, we'll do reviews, that's our common site to develop the team, and we'll make changes to the C fit, and then send the three small, and then two old, you can read that part. I do also want to say, before I forget, they are also, you'll be home in a neighborhood meeting. Um they will be inviting everybody from the two hundred for buffer list, and that will include um Marion, um permanent place, which is the um single-family subdivision right here, uh yeah, in actually Shawnee Mission Parkway, right here. So they'll be home in a neighborhood meeting, you get some comments, and feedback from folks in the area, um focusing a few on, so.
Questions, any comments?
Yeah, like.
So on the uh, on the station, this is only the box, of course, coming up.
The developers, so they, they, they have quite a bit of research and information in that. They feel they have a good handle as to what is in there and what they'll up against, but they are, we work with KDOT, things from a health environment, uh to get, uh no further action murder, which essentially means they've remediated all the, any, any issues there.
And they want to change you?
Oh, so, I'm sorry, that's an excellent question. I want to make sure, I'm gonna be, I'll get back to you, to your question, I just want to make sure the last, there is, um I, I think basing is probably a little bit harsh, harder word. This park is first, this is the first park. Okay, this, and this comes later, this, and when I say later, this comes second, later is probably still the wrong word.
Similar nature to the transportation.
Yeah. This is what's gonna be built first, and then this is next, so yeah. Uh thank you for saying basing, I've got some other things to say. Pedro, you were asking about easement?
Easement?
Mm-hmm.
So have the tiny esements that would have to be purchased or anything?
Um there's actually been quite a bit of easement activity that's been done there, with the undergrounding. Um I think majority of easement term place, um the big discussion we will have is kind of, of our normal discussions of where the property lines are at, particularly in regard to city here, to make sure that um, since, you know, does the property line cut across this, so there needs to be an easement in the entry waypoints, to make sure whoever owns this lot, that this is a separate lot in the future, has access, so those are some of the conversations we had. Before I forget, undergrounding made me remember, um as part of this project, the lines that go this way along Antioch, they will be undergrounded, they will be undergrounded, uh underneath uh Sixty Second Terrace and pop back up over here. So um except for maybe the um tornado warning siren, um I think all the utilities will be undergrounded.
So will it be the future? I can't define the future.
Right.
Uh the famous overhead long way.
Oh, good question, good question, uh appreciate it, appreciate it, uh good question, so. So the straightforward answer is with this project, no. This project, we had lots of discussions about that, and it's just not going to be physically, financially, um able to do with this project. That does not mean the city um does not have a high interest, nor the developer, because the developer also understands that the people down here are gonna want to get some back, so they all will.
Avoid them using cars to do so.
Right, so they understand that as well. Um we think at the city level that um, one, the solution to the problem is high on our list, you can go on our C I D at any point in time, and hopefully, records generated by this will be something like that. So it is not something, well, it's not part of this project, it's not something that anybody at the staff level, nor the technical level, nor I think the developer is, is saying we're not, we're not doing, it will not be taken care of with this project. Um so also, sorry, also, we are also undergoing a study of Shawnee Mission Parkway, I agree, by that whole intersection traffic situation, and as part of that study, there may come something out of that to also maybe be an interim solution, or solutions that better get people across there. So um no, this, it will not be with this project, but yes, we are, um something we still have our handle.
Do I remember correctly in our paper that study that there was language in there asking them to look at that, or do I remember that incorrect?
Mm-hmm, it was language in there for pedestrians, uh multi-modal pedestrian things, pedestrians moving across there. I don't know, I don't remember offhand.
It looked pretty open, and.
Yeah, well.
Which is understandable.
It was, we wanted to make sure that it had language in there about pedestrians, because sometimes, even nowadays, a lot of them are just gonna be, hey, it's just track, it's just cars, well, no, it's everything, so um I, there are pedestrians, pedestrians.
So say the long way, you are, we have different options, and that'd be the long way, it would become, when it becomes a project? So using elevators, you get a, a work?
That was, you know, very preliminarily, and very much a back-to-the-napkin idea. Most likely, that seems to be right now the solution to that, but it's a long ways in the future. Um you know, when I say a long ways, this is gonna, this is gonna be built before something like that.
Mitch? I might have missed, you made a comment on, I'm, I'm trying to get a visual, in a corner where, I think there's a daycare.
Okay.
And maybe an office building?
Yeah, yeah, I know exactly what you're talking about. So um Slater Street, okay, so on the north side, there is the office buildings for um Concess right here. So that's the office building that's literally right across the street from us, so there's that building. Then right here, this is the apart, there's an apartment complex right here on this corner, so this is Slater and Sixty Second Terrace, there's an apartment complex right there. Then you get to a single-family house that sits in the corner, a daycare that sits here, two more homes, if I remember correctly, right here, and then an office building that faces on the Antioch. Um so a couple things, one of the big things to note is, this is all, all zone commercial. It's been zone commercial for a, a very, very, very long time. So technically, these homes are not currently usable right now. So, so yes, these, that's what these, that's what the homes are, right? You can kind of see, yeah, you can see the driveway, it's right here.
Yeah, I wouldn't say, um that the grocery store is proposed, does that mean that preliminary discussions have passed with potential tenants, or that?
I believe it's safe to say that, yeah, I believe they've had, um probably more than one, so I think they wouldn't have brought this unless they had um a fairly high level of certainty to it, so, so yeah. So a little bit, that's a great kind of segue to kind of some other comments in regards to you, since um. Um, obviously, as we all, those who are familiar with Marion Graham Station, most likely, um, not most likely, this is going to be reasoned planning development general. What that gives, uh, you all, the city, the ability to do is to allow, um, some things that don't conform strictly with their straight zoning or by some partnerships and stuff like that. It also allows you a higher level of architectural use. Those architectural rendering, you're able to get those because it's a planning development general development. Um, and it also means that there can be some use limitations in there. Um, my anticipation is without doing any review, that will have very similar use limitations as to what's in Marion Graham's station across the street. I'd say that to say, um, it says proposed grocery. We all, that's what we're all working towards. Um, but it really would be a retail use that would be appropriate for that box. So, um, this is going to be very tough for the planning commission to say, you know, that's going to have to be, that can only be a grocery store from now for forever. So most likely, when you see the use limitation, you know, it'll be very similar to what's on the, on the south side. You know, restaurants, retail stores and those kinds of things.
So many of the intensive plans, anything large of their part during outside of land use development?
Very.
Yeah, with anything?
No, that's the really the positive part about planning development general. You all have the ability, so great example, and I've done parking copies of this, so, so I don't know. Great examples, Marion Graham Station, uh, you all approved a lower, um, per unit parking stall count than what is required for kids. And you all were able to do that as part of the planning development general zoning process, the development plan process. And you all are also able to do what is dislegitimate. Um, the developer brought forth, uh, a very good rationale as to why that's an appropriate thing. If there is a parking reduction on these, again, I'm not done, not look at it. And the anticipation is they would bring over the same type of information and rationale for why they feel it's appropriate for these parking. Again, I don't know if that's a good, not look.
Is the art there?
The developer, yes. Yes? Did you have a comment?
I have a little bit of a comment.
What's that?
Turin rations.
Okay.
They're getting all scratched up, concrete with tire, trip, they're too small. The issue that we have now, uh, is difficult. It turns, you know, for a big driver, you can do it. You've got to understand, if we hit perfection, it's likely with.
So, um.
Just wanted to voice that.
They actually, yeah, and so, um, you know, I, I, they all have the yin and the yang of trying to make things convenient. They have to get all the parking places they can in there. I will say, they have obviously worked on making, um, you know, access into here. And I do believe, I don't have the different color of shading, uh, probably speaking out of terms, but this may be a higher level of asphalt and concrete in a different shade. I don't know that for a fact. This definitely is, this different shade in here. So they obviously have thought about how the trucks can easily, uh, get back in here, back into areas. And also, um, also, uh, trash access, um, right there, uh, so they can easily get some asphalt. They have been thought about.
Does visually, compared to have less challenging traffic with it interior to it? As opposed to Grand Station, which had a lot more made line or library and easy like, uh, uh, traffic with, which I get you. I hear you.
Come on down to the area down on Slater where you went to auto parking. And AC wheels have a real difficult time making turns, so.
Okay.
And if you go up to the new cause, uh, early night, all that, where drive in, like, just the drive in portion, you know, whatever. Federal, uh, tire horn, you hear there's not enough.
Not enough room?
For people who have a little more depth perception to me, you know, turn or whatever. And because of bad drivers, it's just the ratings are not liking.
So also, I did one point I said failed to do it, um, Mount Drive. There's no, no drive in there. So, uh, did you bring that up or not? So this is Mount Drive.
So, yes.
Got it.
Okay.
Brian, how did they come up with the size of the grocery store?
That would be probably with whoever they're discussing occupancy with.
The potential occupancy?
Mm-hmm.
So you said it's housing?
Twelve thousand five hundred.
Okay. I thought you said twelve hundred and I was like.
That would be. Yeah, that would, that would be, that would be, that would be super technical, you know, twelve thousand five hundred.
Okay.
I wanted to have a posh shoot off of the L O room conversation. But, and going back to the over, the idea of overhead construction cropping, is there anything about this design that would make it more difficult or less difficult for something like that in the future?
So, yeah, that's a good que, a good question. So a possible overhead walkway, um, really is going to be driven by easements. The location is going to be driven by easements. Um, the south side really is already spoken for from the majority of the area between Ikea Way and Sean Mission Parkway would ever use undergrounding. So all that underground, you know, those high transmission lines are underground. There are significant easements that are, um, really would be most of the green space between Sean Mission Parkway and, and those stripways in those buildings. Um, so, uh, so, so from that, that's really going to drive where a potential, again, just potential, um, walkway could be at. Um, so as you can look at that map, that's going to push it probably, um, over to, potentially over to, um, the, uh, uh. So over by the visitor's center.
What the, what the overhead that we have, this redevelopment, you know, is? With the electrical, uh, line so that, uh, if you pick up these buildings and whatever from the north side street, I have to order under, come from the south side.
Oh, so, so, yeah, so, um, if you remember, there was a giant, there was a lot of activity that occurred over the winter right here. That was to go underneath Sean Mission Parkway. So, yes, um, the boring is done, um, for that. So there will be power from underneath Sean Mission Parkway, for services, this whole area without having to do any more foreign.
So the actual beer boxes on the south side, you know, just over the south side.
It's already open on the north side.
So, so, yeah, so what happens is, you know, the mighty line comes along the south side of Sean Mission Parkway and then goes underneath, well, goes underneath Sean Mission Parkway up here to provide connectivity to this area.
So say if one day the future would be, everything would be put in, when you start the development of that, right, Gary?
Right, so it'll be part of the development project.
Does it affect?
Cor, uh, no, it is not, in fact. Um, I can't tell by drawing, one of the drawings there show, um, more vaults attached previously. If I remember correctly, I gave a very brief look at the drawing, um, there's a vault that has to be.
They get vault blocks there, but you don't have a segue way to switch any of that.
Yeah, and this isn't the utility plan, so it shows up to a little. Another question.
Want to make sure that we didn't have the bore under.
That is, that was, yeah. You saw that activity attack there, which was pretty interesting to watch. That was the whole idea for that.
Do you not be able to see it? The current plans for perimeter sidewalk and theater sidewalk?
You cannot. It is tough to see it up there, but that is something that we definitely will make sure there's a sidewalk all over.
Okay.
On both blocks, we will make sure that there is sidewalk all over. So perimeter here, perimeter.
Handicap approach.
It'll be, that'll be all, uh, idiot.
And also, I'm wondering too, is the intent has, can probably say, oh, this is during all phases of construction?
Yes.
Okay. Construction always impact on neighbors and?
Yeah, this, yeah. Well, um, you know, probably the biggest impact is going to be one of the demo, with the demo and stuff. It's going to be, um, probably the biggest.
Right, because those spaces overlap, or they will fade one, you can leave one of them to?
Um, I believe there's probably maybe some overlapping in regards to excavation and things like that. Um, but I, their main focus is going to get, to get, to get that, the proposed grocery store. That is their main focus.
Are these plans for sitting size only?
Oh, no, these are subject to, these have been submitted, so they are subject to all, any kind of course.
So they're on Mary? Paid for?
Not yet, no. We put those up when we do the staff report to you all. So that's what they thought.
So, how could the commission get outside of the team?
We would ask you wait till we do the staff report. This is highly likely, these are going to change. What I do need is going to change. Yeah, if you want to come in and see them, we'd be happy to show them to you. But again, kind of back to that whole concept, you are going to be acting quasi judicial fashion. We want you to do all this information in a cohesive manner and the right information, because these will, these are going to change. Because we have to armor you yet. Um, so if you want to see them, if you want to come down and take a look at them, we'd be happy to show them to you. But, um, yeah, we will send them out to all the commissioners at the normal time. But if you have any questions or do you want to see something, feel free to shoot me, let me know. Yeah, let you see it. But you just need to understand, what we have today is going to change. It's going to change.
When, when are they planning on getting started?
So, of course, the plans are, um, they, um, the demo of the city owned libraries buildings, we'd like it started this month, is this April yet? This month. Um, they have a goal to get all asphalt for the east block done before the asphalt, like, which is essentially everybody in construction would use around Thanksgiving, decided to think, oh, the asphalt being important. So that's, that's what their goal is, trying to get that asphalt and everything done right. For the east side, just talking about the east side.
Then, period.
Uh, that's, don't know the answer to that. It'll obviously go away before Thanksgiving because it'll be asphalt.
I'm trying to figure it out now. How long I have, you want to get, you know, like, uh, Roy's cappuccino?
Well, the, uh, like I said, the meeting at the city council right now, the June, June schedule, that's kind of probably the, I would get before then.
Is the information here now public?
This certainly is open to projects of any kind of record request, yes.
What is the standard for these businesses, like, the possibility, you know, care, but like, so, are, is it thirty day notification or?
So I do not know the answer to that. That is a discussion between the developer and the, so, but I can't tell you, uh, this, I can't tell you that possibilities that they're, they're working on, that they are very close at an R A to relocate or to another place here in Marion. If you're familiar with, um, the, um, office building that is over, uh, behind Russell Stover's. So just to the north of Russell Stover's, that building right there. I, I think they are ninety-nine point nine percent done with getting that agreement put in place and start work on, on, uh, rehabbing that building.
Okay.
Is any part of the old library going to be collected from historical?
Hey, I've been in that building, and I don't think so. The most, I'm thinking about that library, so this is the first time I've seen it. I walked into that thing, and there is an indoor children's bathroom, made from Quebec. I think it was put in with that building. It is, it's the size of this room, wow. It is, like, what?
Oh, my floor is under siege.
So that is, so, but other than that, that, that building is, is, is seen as useful.
I think the library did something right when they closed it down.
I believe they did something, yeah. And I think that, yeah, they, they, they sure did. They sure did.
Other questions?
Just, you spoke, sorry, I can talk to you after this.
I get the question from all of you, Terry.
Uh, no, sorry, no. No, this isn't a public, I apologize, but no. Um, if you come past a meeting and may touch on any kind of comments, any kind of comments you can make. So, no, this is just for the sake, so. Uh, any other question?
Is there going to be a special one at Marion Graham Station for the EV charging stations?
Oh, uh, yes, there is. There will be EV charging stations for the, in, in this, for, uh, the parking garage, yes.
Our old building?
They are going to build, build to, um, the LEED standards. They're not going to go for LEED certification, which is exactly what they did on the south side. Exactly. All right, there isn't any other questions for you? Again, if you got any questions or comments to me that come to you later, feel free to shoot them over to me. Feel free to send them to me. If you want to see these plans, feel free to come in and check them out. Again, uh, I can't stress enough, if you come into the agency, it's like, it's not going to change. Hey, I thought that was there when I saw it, man. No, they've changed. And the reason it changes is because we had review outside agencies, like, uh, water sewer had review. Um, they're going to have a day reviewing, uh, so there's lots of inputs that's going to happen between now. But wasn't that, appreciate you guys taking the time to look at this. And, uh, again, any other questions, feel free to let me know. All right.
Are there any, are you hoping? Maybe you have to use a little bit of the?
Because this is a commercial. Well, yeah, this is. I don't think it works.
All my neighbors have, uh, sort of, I think, in terms of, I don't know. The women's, that, uh, the, 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 uh, you just say, uh, we'll put it in that thing. Get everything, you know, have it forward. That's not, you know, every, so, you're trying to walk in and how you do it. That's going to be a part of like, maybe a whole group, you know, a lot of people don't even know.
Earth is still real.
So that's really trying to unify the practice. Remember, it's good that, uh, so, uh, I can't, but I can't, but I can't, but I can't. Since I first started in the art, you know, one of the things that I learned, and I can see, it's definitely my story. So my, you know, that's what I call it, I think, uh, uh.
For the first time.
I get that, but I can't understand.
Well, that one.
And about who made the, uh, on the drawing, right?
They do a lot of all the, uh, uh, that, uh, from me. I'm doing, you know, we, uh, we.
Well, you know, really, you said, uh, uh, I'm really, I'm like, I'm like, I'm like.
So we had a, first, first, uh, uh. They're turning to.
I, uh, someone called, uh, really, really, really.
We think, uh, well, we need to really collaborate with the city.
Well, there is a, yeah.